We will call our meeting to order, Renata. If you would do the roll call, please.
Gookin?
Here.
Adams?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Edinger? Evans?
Here.
McEvers?
Here.
Tonight, we have our invocation by Pastor Bob Sunquist from Christ the King Church. Welcome, Bob.
I want to thank you for letting me come and pray with you guys today. I want you to know that I pray for you every night, and I just want to thank you in person for the opportunity. Let us pray. Lord God, we pray for all who earn authority, and we thank you especially for this city council and for government given in our beloved land in the state of Idaho. Give me the grace with my fellow citizens to value the officers and council members of our government as those sent by you, instilling us that respect and honor that is due them. Lord, endow them with wisdom for their several duties, with a spirit of sacrifice for the common welfare, with mercy and justice, with uprightness and kindliness. Lord, wherever somebody would come with evil intent or selfishness, with greed, a vain desire for honor, or abuse of power among us, as well as in other governments and world, Lord, correct them gently, but grant that the true purposes of government may prevail, safeguarding peace and prosperity, so that we may live soberly and uprightly in your sight and have opportunity to tell of you in your kingdom. These prayers we bring before you because in Jesus we know that they are heard, in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Steve, leave us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you will notice, Councilman Edinger is absent tonight. Councilman Edinger has been absent very few days in his 44-year career with the city, and Ron is recuperating from surgery, and he may be watching tonight.
I hope not.
Hopefully has something else to do. But anyway, we all want to wish Ron the best and that he recovers and that he's back in here in his chair where he belongs. So get well soon, Ron. So we have amendments to the agenda. We do have an amendment to the agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move that we add an item to executive session, category B, to consider the evaluation dismissal or disciplining of or to hear complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent or public school student. I guess it's included in the statute, so I'll read it.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We have presentations tonight, T-2 Road Scholar certification. Doug Chase.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I'm Doug Chase representing the Idaho T-2 Center. After graduating from the University of Idaho in the early 1970s, I spent 33-some years with the auto transportation department, and after retiring there, I am now a part-time trainer for the Idaho Technology Transfer Center. A little bit of information about that. It began as a program at the auto transportation department in 1986, spent 10 years there, and was transferred to the University of Idaho in 1996, and then in 2009, it was then transferred to the Local Highway Technical Assistance Council in Boise. And Bruce Druze was the previous director of the T-2 Center, and he retired in September, and Leila Kroll took over that position. She would normally be here, and she sends her regards and her regrets that she can't be here, but she has a one-month-old baby at home that she's taking care of, so hopefully he'll forgive her for that. I am here to give presentations on our Road Scholar and Road Masters Program. That's a program in which we provide classes to local city, highway, district, and county personnel on how to build and maintain roads. And the Road Scholar Program consists of seven core classes that individuals must take, and then four elective classes for a total of 11, approximately 80 hours of classroom work. And then the Road Master follows that with another five core classes and five elective classes. And at the end of each one of those programs, individuals that make it through that program are presented with a Road Scholar, to get a hat, a Leatherman tool, and a certificate. And then the Road Master, they get the certificate and a monogrammed coat. With that said, it gives me great pleasure, on behalf of LTAC and the T-2 Center, to present a Road Scholar presentation to Russ Grant with your City Street Department. Russ? Congratulations. And a Road Master to an individual who's not here tonight, Justin Kimberling, but Terry Lee with the Street Department is going to accept for Justin. So he's getting the Road Master. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, we have a Vision 2030 update. Dr. Charles Buck.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, it's my pleasure to be here with you again to update you on the Coeur d'Alene 2030 Vision Project. I know that many of you and many in the audience are up-to-date and have been actively involved in the project, but I appreciate this chance to take just a few minutes and let you know where we are with the project as of today. We are approaching, we're in the last two months of the year-long project. Sorry, I'll just pull this up. How come you can never find this when you really need it? There it is. And during these last two months, we are now working to finalize this major deliverable of the project, which is the implementation plan that I've spoken with you about before. So this is the culmination of the visionary work that's been collected from the community over the last 10 months, and the translation of those visionary ideas into the actions that our community can undertake in the coming 15 years out to the year 2030. We engaged a very skilled and committed committee to work on the implementation plan. That group of 34 has met multiple times over the last couple of months, and we winnowed that down to a smaller work group to really bring together a finalized draft of the implementation plan that we could really begin to chip away at and focus in on making sure that our described actions in these six topic areas correlated with the visionary input that we received from the community. We are now in the process of rolling out these actions for comment from our Community Advisory Committee, as well as from the Implementation Plan Committee themselves, and we will open a survey to the community starting on May 9th that will give everyone in the community a chance via our online survey to comment on the implementation plan. I showed you this graphic before. This is just an overview of what the implementation plan will look like. Right there in the middle of the screen, you see the components of the implementation plan, with the various vision focus areas at the top. We have six vision topic areas, the strategies that have been articulated, and then the specific actions in each row across this plan. Our current plan is not as pretty as this one. It will be when we finish. We have a draft version of this plan now, contains about 179 actions that fall into these six topic areas. I'll just show you a quick snapshot of the working spreadsheet here. This is from our vision focus area, education and learning, and you can see that we've identified the game changer project and easy wins that were articulated at our Community Vision Summit last November. Those will be really called out in the implementation plan so that those key ideas feature prominently. Then you can see an example strategy of lifelong learning opportunities in this particular vision focus area, and there are three action items that are described there as well. You can see tentative partners. These are all, this is all in draft form at this point, so we're still looking to engage and secure the lead partners, to engage the supporting partners, and also to establish specific timelines for each action. I wanted to particularly call up this action item example. This item 12.1 calls for a community maker space, to a physical gathering point for the design projects, a place where tools and projects can come together to realize innovation. And that's a particular game-changing idea that emerged from the Vision Summit, and there's a group already engaged here in the community that's creating this maker space on Fourth Street. So that's an example of an action that's already underway and moving along at a nice clip. So I mentioned already that we are just ready to engage the public once again to, once again, get feedback from the community on this implementation plan, and specifically, we're asking the community to comment on these action items that have been articulated. You'll recall over the last 10 months or so of me coming up and updating you that we've reached out at numerous points to try to engage the community with their vision and ideas, and this is a next opportunity to get broad feedback on these actions. I'll just show you an example of what we're looking for in the survey. Here's the internet address for the survey, which will be open on May 9th, and we'll be broadcasting this as broadly as possible through our website. We'll have press releases, various ways to publicize the opportunity for the community to feedback. Here's what you'll see when you engage with this survey, some just brief instructions reminding you of the six topic areas that are listed at the top of the screen there. If you go and do the survey, as I've mentioned, there's 179, I think it is, actions. It's a lot to do. You don't have to do all of those. You may just want to pick an area, a topic area, where you're particularly interested, growth and development, for example, jobs in the economy. Of course, we welcome input from everyone on all of these topic areas. I just talked to the community member today who's engaged this survey. He said he went through the entire thing and it took him 30 minutes. I think that may be a record speed, but if you have a half an hour, I think it's a great way to use a half an hour to contribute to the project. So if you select the topic area that you'd like to review first here, for example, and press next, then you'll be taken to an action. Here's the first action, and you'll get to provide us then your feeling on the relative importance of this action, and then there's a short little comment box where we'll be looking for any particular comments that you have on that action. And every one of the actions is characterized in this way, and so you can see it's something that can be stepped, you can step through fairly quickly. It'll give us some quantitative data, which will enable us to, that will contribute to the prioritization of these actions as we move forward into the implementation. You've seen a version of our timeline before. We're just providing some additional specificity as we move towards the end of the project, which will be the end of June. You can see the Implementation Plan Committee is finishing up their work now. I've been talking about this action plan draft, which we will further refine, and we're really now actively engaged in reaching out to these lead partners that have also been identified by the community and our Implementation Plan Committee in order to identify their comfort level with engaging with these actions, get ideas for additional partners, and really secure the project team that will be taking these actions on. Once we obtain this additional feedback, we'll be launching the implementation plan. I've mentioned before that we're kind of trying to finish up a little bit early so that we can really focus in the last month or so on the handoff to the partners that will be undertaking these actions as we move into the future. So we're planning on, tentatively on June 25th, to have a community celebration, to celebrate the completion of this action plan, which will be a living document, but our current 2014 version of the implementation plan, and to thank all of the community members who've participated and the partners that will undertake these actions moving forward. We'll be working on this handoff plan and hand the project off in June. You'll also recall perhaps that we've secured independent funding for a second scientific survey, which will validate many of these actions, in particular, these game-changing and easy-win actions, to give us another scientific review of this community input and the opportunity to prioritize that principally for policymakers in the future to be able to refer back and say, here's our implementation plan, this is what we agreed was in it, here's what the scientific survey said was the relative importance of this particular action compared to the others that appear in the plan. So that's what our timeline is looking like. We, as you recall, accelerated this project into a one-year operation, which has been a whirlwind of activity, but it's gone very nicely, and we've had tremendous assistance from the community throughout. I've talked about our next steps already. One thing that I didn't mention is that we have approached a local community foundation who is interested in providing some additional funding to help us kind of get through the final gates of this race. That grant has been submitted now, and we're looking forward to a decision on that in the short term. That will be a $10,000 matching grant. I talked about the implementation plan. We also are going to finalize the community visions that have been articulated in each of these topic areas and the overall vision, and we'll create a very friendly and easy-to-distribute pamphlet that will enable all of us to share those visions and the implementation plan. And then, of course, the handoff is the next important component. And with that, I'd love to take any questions, and we'll appreciate any questions from the community as well. You see my email address and that of our project manager, Nicole, on the screen.
Any questions for Dr. Buck?
Sure.
Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Dr. Buck, what do you see the city's role being going forward with this plan?
Well, we see the city taking a very prominent role in the implementation of this plan. We've been discussing with many of you the opportunity to hand off action items and really the bulk of the project to the city to create a continuity that will enable us to engage with the existing momentum and move forward along the lines of the priorities that have been identified through this year-long process. Those of us on the project management team are certainly interested and heavily invested in the process and anxious to continue to participate. I think that's also true of our Community Advisory Committee, as well as our Implementation Plan Committee. So I think from the project management perspective, we really see this as an opportunity for a vivid and dynamic partnership with the city and other partners identified in the plan moving forward. I mentioned that we are working to keep this plan dynamic. So what we come up with in June will certainly not be the plan that we expect to see in June of 2018 or 2020, for example, and we anticipate engaging the community throughout that period.
Very good. I was talking to Mr. Gridley a couple of days ago, and I was kind of prognosticating about the future and what would happen and what I was thinking, and definitely the city would play a key role in that. In fact, taking your survey, which I completed, which was my task, and I did it that day, but it was funny because there were a lot of items on there that we've already done, and so that was pretty cool.
Yeah, it's really been kind of gratifying to go through and see how some of the ideas that have sprung up maybe already existed and were already underway, but it's enabled the community who weren't aware of those ideas or those projects to recognize, hey, this is going on, let me figure out how to get involved with it. I think we're going to see a lot more of that as we go along. And 179 actions seems like a lot. Well, we've got 15 years, and we've got a lot to cover in the city in terms of these various topic areas. So, you know, I think there'll be lots of wins down the road that we can look forward to, just as we have done for the 2020 vision that was completed around the turn of the century and many of the great accomplishments that came out of that, including the building that we're in right now. I also want to be sure to thank the council and the city for their support through this process. It's been really unwavering and incredibly important to enable us to get this close.
Any other questions for Dr. Buck? Thank you very much. There's a lot of hard work that's been put into it, and we look forward to the finished product and taking it from there.
Great.
Thank you very much. So we come to the public comment portion of it. Do we have anyone wishing to come up and give public comment? They would have three minutes on matters that relate to city government business.
Russell McLean, Cootney County. I've got my own way of talking, girls, so you're going to have to have some patience. We liquidated all assets in Coeur d'Alene, because I don't, you know, the old man of mayor built quite a regime, and I don't want to pay for it. I'm still getting hit 10% of my taxes through the LCDC and then through the school tax of the, you know, the flatusland 271 by having the police in there. I don't like either one of them. I've tried to learn, but your LCDC staff exercises the Miranda rights flawlessly. So what I would like is to have an elected county official appointed to the LCDC board so we can watch where our money's going, and then, you know, I don't want to pay for the police department. If they're so unsafe, the police should be arresting their parents for sending them there, you know? But on another note, it's about this time last year, we got rear-ended on Sherman, and it took 15 days to get a police report while I had a broken shoulder, and not knowing if they had insurance, if I had to use my good State Farm. That needs to be addressed. I should have had that police report before anybody left. I waited 15 days, and it complicated all the, the healing and getting to the doctor, the muscles contracting, all the rest of the stuff. So I think you need to work on that policy, okay? It should have been Johnny on the spot like the good men and women at the Sheriff Department would do, or the state bulls. At the end of the investigation, you exchange information. It took 15 days to get it out of your police department, and that ain't good. So I would like for you guys to address those policies in the event it happens to somebody else. And that's all I got to say. Bye now.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to give public comment at this time?
Good evening. Congratulations to all of you. I just wanted to mention Dave Barger, 530 West Harrison. Many of you have seen me here before. I'd only mentioned the young gentleman obviously has concern, and, you know, it kind of parallels my exact issue. I was trying to get a copy of a report, a favorable report, letter of recommendation from Mr. Plager Schaefer. It didn't work out a whole lot better than this gentleman mentioned here. Turn off your cable vision, folks. Take an opportunity to become aware and informed. People are administratively at risk only by virtue of the fact that, you know, all of these government offices are, you know, empty, and they're private contractors. I could only recommend that you take an opportunity, maybe sometime, to listen to Republic Broadcasting, Christian Patriot Broadcast. You know, it's not very fancy, but it's a good best effort to try to hold this republic together. We don't see the need for further insurance of a police state. Absolutely believe that, you know, Rod Class over at AIB on Talk Shoe Radio has a very good point. He's a private attorney general, been recognized nationally, Senate Judiciary Committee, and congressionally as a private attorney general. Now, I wanted to mention that the young gentleman here was hoping to get a police report. It didn't work out for 15 days. I guarantee you, I waited longer, and it's going to be a lot more catastrophic, unfortunately. Rod Class's discussion, and like I say, he's at AIB Talk Shoe Radio, episode 650. Mr. Mayor, if you would take the opportunity, I think it's 34 minutes and 10 seconds, not a lot of time, but when you hear them, Mr. Gookin, it's very important, we do not need another police substation. What we need is a state bank, you know, and generate our own economy right here, barter, whatever, and create jobs for people who are desperate to be productive. We have a whole entire cultural society, a million of veterans coming back, they're taking, you know, chemicals that are bad for them when they need to be treated humanely, and we can't get the services by virtue of all those government officials are ultimately public, are private contractors. Those private contractors have no allegiance to you, nor the constitutional republic, Woody. They're very dangerous. Thanks so very much, folks.
Thank you, David. Anyone else wishing to give public comment? Okay, we will move on to the consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to move for approval of consent calendar, including Resolution 14015, Declaration of Surplus of that old machine that scoops snow forever and is older than dirt, and the approval of the amendment number two and the professional services engineering on our sewer wastewater treatment plant.
Second. So we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the consent calendar? Roll call.
Evans?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
McEvers?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Gookin?
Yes.
Motion carried. Announcements? Anyone from the council have announcements? Dan? Do you want to go? Oh, Amy, we'll have you go.
All right. I have an announcement from the Arts Commission, and it is that the Idaho Commission on the Art is inviting you to its local meetings to share your ideas, priorities, and concerns for its next long-range plan. The meetings will be public forums with ample opportunity for participants to join in on the conversation, and this will be Thursday, May 8th, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. here in the Public Library Community Room. And once again, this is for the Idaho Commission on the Arts.
Thank you. Amy?
I have some.
Kiki? We'll save the best for last. Is it the best?
No.
It's just me?
Real quickly, just wanted to let you know that I will be welcoming the Rotary District Conference to town on Friday, May 9th. I will also be doing some opening remarks at what I think is a very important event, the Veterans Stand Down, and that is at the Cootney County Fairgrounds on Saturday, the 10th. I'm also going to be the emcee again this year at the North Idaho Violence Prevention Center's annual breakfast fundraiser on May 22nd. Sponsorship tables are still available, please. And I also wanted to quickly thank my friend here at Channel 19, as well as all of the staff and my fellow council members for their assistance during the last six weeks while I've been trying to recoup from a fractured ankle. a fractured ankle and knee surgery. I'm down to one crutch, and I really appreciate everyone's help and patience.
Thank you. Dan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to say, Mr. Edinger, if you're watching, turn off the TV, okay? I wish you would get better.
And don't tell him I'm across the line into his space.
She's not encroaching. But I do hope you get better. You are missed. Also wanted to say that a great majority of us, including members of the old council, were at the Human Rights Banquet a week ago and a day, and that was a lot of fun. I really enjoyed that, and it was a tremendous honor to receive that gift. It was really a cool thing. On another topic, I was contacted locally by a group of people who are very interested in returning the dog tags that used to hang on the old Freedom Tree back to the veterans or their families who originally, who owned those dog tags. They've been working to do that, and with the help of Mr. Crowe at Channel 19, I recorded a PSA that you will see on Channel 19 or Channel 16.2, and I would like to show it to you right now. Thank you. Hello, I'm Coeur d'Alene City Councilman Dan Gookin. For years, the Freedom Tree in McEwen Park was ornamented with dog tags honoring local veterans. Last year, this tree was removed, but the dog tags were saved thanks to the Cootney County Genealogical Society, the Lieutenant George Farragut Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, and the Cootney County Veterans Council. Efforts are being made to return the dog tags to the veterans or their families. You can do your part to help. Shown on the screen are the names of those veterans whose dog tags were found on the Freedom Tree. Please take a moment to review this list to see if you recognize any of the veterans or perhaps If you recognize any of these names, please contact the Cootney County Veterans Council, courtesy of Sandy Dutray. Her contact information is sandy dutray, 3789 North Stephen Place, Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, 83815. Her phone number is 208-292-4938, and her email address is being shown on the screen. Thank you for your time and efforts in returning this piece of history to those Coeur d'Alene veterans who proudly served our country and honored this city that we call home.
Nice job, Dan.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I hope this is successful, and we get those dog tags back to those veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Could that be made available maybe on our website, a link?
I believe that would be possible, so I will look into it. Thank you.
We should do that, so have a link on our website, so people can review that. Anything else from any members of the council?
Woody, just got a real quick one. Speaking of history, Robert Singletary's been doing his history of Coeur d'Alene since last year, and he's coming up on the 40s this month, and he has moved from the third Thursday to the last Thursday this month. It's right here in the Library Community Room. It's free. It's real interesting, and the 40s, I think, will be a lot about the war and how it affected Coeur d'Alene and all those areas around here that were affected by World War II. So it's a freebie. It's real interesting. You get to hear a lot of the inside scoop on what was going on in Coeur d'Alene this month in the 40s. So I'm almost there in the 40s.
Thank you, Woody. Okay, I have one appointment. Cynthia Taggart to the CDA TV Committee, so I'm looking for a motion for that.
A move that we appoint Cynthia Taggart to this Coeur d'Alene TV Committee.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
So a quick note. Cynthia is part of the, I call it the Health Department.
Panhandle Health.
Thank you. Panhandle Health Department. And she, far as a TV committee, she does a weekly update on what's happening health-wise, and that's kind of a new connection for Coeur d'Alene TV to have somebody that can do about shots and bad things happening and probably good things happening. So we're real excited to have her on board. I appreciate the support.
Okay. Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. We'll move on to the Administrator's Report. Wendy?
As much trouble as Dr. Buck. Where is the slideshow button?
He's a doctor. He knows these things.
Oh, clear down there. Yeah, there you go. Thank you. All right. The Coeur d'Alene Police Department held their annual 2013 Department Awards Ceremony on Wednesday, April 30, 2014, and honored team members for their exemplary service to the community. This year, Leonard Reed, pictured there on my left, was honored with the Volunteer of the Year Award. Bob Foster, our co-enforcement officer, was awarded Civilian of the Year, and Steve Harris was awarded Officer of the Year. When you see these fine folks, say congratulations and thank them for their service. There is Officer Gus Wessel, who was recognized by the Cootney County Substance Abuse Council as being the top DUI enforcement officer for the Coeur d'Alene Police Department. The Substance Abuse Council has recognized local law enforcement for many years in regard to the efforts put forth on DUI enforcement. This is the third consecutive year that Officer Wessel has received this This is great fun and great news. The eastern section of McEwen Park is now open. Weekly McEwen Park updates continue to be posted on the city's website at cdaid.org and the blog at cdaacity.blogspot.com. These updates will also be provided to the local media. One thing to mark on your calendars is the dedication ceremony, which is Saturday, May 24, and we will have more details coming. There will be food and live music that day. Also, a friendly reminder from Bill Greenwood, our interim Parks Director, to please stay off the portions of the park that have been freshly seeded to allow the grass an opportunity to grow. So for the time being, let's stay on the sidewalks and give the grass a good head start. Here is another update on the McEwen Donor Wall, which I have talked about before. For information, call 818-6922, and you can donate to have your name on the donor wall for $500 per line. We had some students plant geraniums at the Fallen Heroes Memorial Plaza. It was Hayden Meadows Elementary 4th graders who rolled up their sleeves last Saturday and planted 60 geraniums at the Fallen Heroes Plaza. The plants were grown in their school's greenhouse. Each year, students from teacher Christina Childers' class donate to the Police and Fire Memorial Foundation through a program called Pennies for Protectors. This year, Mrs. Childers and her students decided to also include the Fallen Heroes Plaza as part of their goodwill effort. We thank them for their kind service. Constitutional scholar and author Dr. David Adler will discuss the Constitution and its relationship with religion in the United States during a program at the Coeur d'Alene Public Library. That is May 8, on Thursday, at 7:00 p.m., and the program is free. Following through on a commitment to be readily accessible to all citizens, Coeur d'Alene's Mayor Steve Widmire has established a direct telephone line for callers to leave a comment, idea, or concern. To leave a message 24/7, any time of the day with the mayor, call 769-2220, extension 5 or 3, or on the front page of the city's website, which you see right there. Just click on Message the Mayor. A cabinet that once housed part of the card catalog at the Coeur d'Alene Public Library has been repurposed to serve the Seed Saver Project. The Seed Swap Project was set up to encourage urban agriculture with seeds for plant varieties that do well in North Idaho, depending, of course, on the conditions where the seeds are planted. Participants are invited to take the seeds they need and to contribute commercially packaged seeds that are less than five years old. You don't have to give seeds to participate, though. Also, an experienced gardener will be at the library on Tuesdays, 11 to 1 o'clock, to provide any advice. To become a student representative on city committees, please, please contact us or email us to look at what those opportunities are at 769-2300. We're very interested in filling a student representative position on all our committees, and right now, we have not a lot of takers. So if you know anybody that you think would be a great representative here, please let us know. We would like to see applications by June 15. And we are also looking for lifeguards to supervise the public swimming area. We need about seven or eight. Right now, we have about three applications, and we need these lifeguards to perform public safety, rescue, and first aid functions. They would need to be Red Cross certified, and for a more detailed list of job duties and qualifications, you can visit the city's website and click on Job Postings. The deadline is approaching for the artists to submit proposals for the Coeur d'Alene Arts Commission Utility Box Beautification Project. Nine box locations have been designated this year to be enhanced using an artist's design to be printed on vinyl and wrapped around the boxes. Information packets are available at City Hall or, again, online on our website. We would like to see your proposals by May 19 at 5:00 p.m. Last, stay informed. Get more information on the city's website, which has just been repurposed and redesigned, and you can access our Facebook page, Twitter blogs from the front page. It is, again, cdaid.org. That's all I have.
Any questions for Wendy? Thank you. We will move on to General Services. Who's taking that on for? Ron? Is that you, Mr. Adams?
I'm not on General Services.
General Services?
I can run with it, just to make it more interesting.
Yeah.
Ron, this one's for you. See, we have a proposed robot regulations. Mike, it's good to see you.
Yeah, I got to thinking, you know, I may be the first city attorney, and you may be the first city council to have some, in the universe, to have somebody discuss this topic with you of robot regulation. And we come to you from General Services. There was a discussion, and I knew there was some interest on council. This is really coming from some citizens, and I think there's a lot of folks out there, including young folks, who have been active in robotics and the science around robotics, and they see this as a niche and something that can be a growth area in Coeur d'Alene. So Nick Smoot has been one of the proponents of that, and I think he can come and talk a little bit more about, I don't know much about robotics, but I think there's a lot going on, and a lot of things will be going on in the future. The proposal, I think, is to ask council if you would like staff to look at possible regulations that would deal with robots, perhaps regulations not unlike skateboards or bicycles on sidewalks, how sidewalks are used, because robots might be operating there, and other things, including licensing of robots of a certain size and things like that. So this is a new idea coming from our community, and with that, I would introduce Nick Smoot, who's here, who could answer your questions and give you more information and a little presentation.
Thank you. Thanks for having me tonight. And I know, I believe we have a PowerPoint. I'm not sure. Am I running it from here myself? Okay. And, oh, it's already up. Look at that.
Use mouse works too.
Okay, perfect. I'll set it up to, should I go full screen with it? Is that better?
I can help you with that now.
Perfect, perfect.
He didn't really help to find that spot.
And please feel free to interrupt any time with questions, and thank you for having me. And as Mike was sharing, it's a place of interest in the community. I actually just ran to my car and drove over here from an event that I started in September, that we've now had anywhere from 250 to about, on average, 100 citizens per month coming to one of the largest tech meetups. That's kind of brewing since September, and it's fascinating to me what I've seen come together quickly in this town. So I'll go through this, and we call it the Innovation Collective, and I want you to understand something. The robotics, proposed robotics ordinances are completely separate from the Innovation Collective. But the Innovation Collective is a collaborative of citizens here in Coeur d'Alene that desire to drive innovation, startups, creativity, arts, and specifically, when I look at it, it's tech startups, because as the world knows, software's consuming the world. I think that's, you're foolish to not believe that, especially when everyone sees things like these major acquisitions happening for billions of dollars and wondering, how can I be a part of that? And in my opinion, I think Coeur d'Alene should find a way to be a part of that in a niche space, and I believe that's robotics. So address this a little bit, but there is a major economic shift happening in the world. A lot of the older generation have been laid off or gone through a major economic downturn, and my generation and even younger, they're viewing themselves almost as their own corporation, and they're trying to hone their skills, and then leasing those out to different organizations or creating their own assets of value. And with that shift, I think every city needs to have a hyper-focused group of entrepreneurship. Boulder, Colorado is an incredible example of that with Brad Feld. If you don't know much about Boulder, Colorado, they took an effort where they partnered with a lot of universities and just started seeing what they could do in innovation. They've become a major center for data and are producing startups that are being sold in the millions. They've produced thousands and thousands of jobs. Short period of time, they have Techstars, which is now an accelerator that brings in tech companies, and a lot of the rest of the United States is looking to Boulder now and the model they've come up with, and it has spread quickly. I would like to bring some of that spark to Coeur d'Alene. No city in the world has yet become known as the startplace for robots. Carnegie Mellon, you see MIT, are universities that specialize in that space, and we actually have students from the area here that do go to Carnegie Mellon and specialize in robotics. Boston is well-known because of MIT there, but still, the city is not the place for startups. I think there is a city that should set itself apart in the United States as the home for robotics to come to. It doesn't need ordinances, but I definitely think it helps and kind of catches people off guard when there's a city taking it seriously ahead of time. The global opportunity in robotics, I say it this way, is it's moved from sci-fi folklore to early-stage revolution. Robots are everywhere. If you don't believe that, next time you do your dishes, if you do them by hand, then sure. But if you're starting a dishwasher, think of it that way. You have a robot, and robots are very poorly defined. It could be anything from your toaster to C3PO. And I think there's an edge right now where, there's a company in Post Falls. They have a machine the size of a shoebox that can move airplanes. They're looking to make it autonomous. How can they get that to move on Oracle databases? How can they get that to do inventory in stores? But guess what? They're considering leaving, because they don't believe that there's the talent here that could pull it off. I met with them and said, look, we're getting ready to recruit from these major schools, and I'm hoping the city continues to make a move towards the future of robotics, because we have Google purchasing nine companies recently in robotics. We have DARPA being incredibly popular right now, competitions all around the world that are happening in robotics, even autonomous cars, responsive homes. That sounds funny, but I have actually a think tank that I've put together myself with a few people that will be happening here in Coeur d'Alene this summer. And again, it's separate from the proposed laws. I don't need these laws, but man, they'd help. But this think tank has the gentleman who oversees the robotics autonomous car program at Google. It has a gentleman who's building homes that respond to thought. He is working on this and has the cerebral hut. You put on an EEG machine, and it starts moving how you think. The colors change, and his theory is, why couldn't we have a home that, when you get a migraine, responds to you? It should be that place now, because we can start tapping into the data like that, playing with fascinating things. Even why couldn't we have drones replacing police helicopters? I come from living in LA for the last chunk of time, and they're the ghetto birds, we call them, and they fly around everywhere, and they're big, they're obnoxious, they cost a lot of money, but why couldn't we have a quadcopter that replaces that? I even saw the local police department use, I believe, a robot in a current negotiation, and I reached out to one of the gentlemen on the police force and said, we'd love to talk to you about that. What could our city help create around that? What could we create to help you guys in that pursuit? Someone suggested, why not replacing, even looking at some of the things like a police dog? Would it be helpful to have a robot that could assist in that? Because I'm not stopping with police dogs chasing me. There's no way. But if something that wasn't going to bite me, I might have a better aptitude to stop. There's a video here. There's a video here I wanted to play, and this, when we talk about robots, a lot of people think of robotics as something scary. They think of it as sci-fi. And this video, I think, hits at home of, it's real, it's here, it's now, it's happening all around the world. No city has said, we want to be the place to tackle it. And I think this video helps you understand the power of what can be and what is coming.
Good morning.
Hey, Nathaniel, how are you?
Doing just great.
Go ahead, Steve.
Auto-driving.
Here we go.
Away we go.
Look, ma, no hands.
No hands anywhere.
No hands, no feet.
No hands, no feet, no nothing.
I love it.
So we're here at the stop sign.
Yep.
Car's using radars and laser to check and make sure there's nothing coming either way.
Fight myself.
Old habits die hard, man. They don't die.
Hey, anybody up for a taco?
Yeah, yeah. What do you want to do today, Steve?
I'm all for tacos, though, myself.
All right, well, let's go get a taco at the drive-thru. And we're turning into the parking lot.
Howdy.
There we go. Kind of creep along here. Does anybody have any money?
I've got money.
No, I've got my wallet right here. If you roll down your window and order a burrito.
I'm doing very well. How are you today?
This is some of the best driving I've ever done.
Ninety-five percent of my vision is gone. I'm well past being blind. You lose your timing in life, everything takes you much longer. There are some places that you cannot go, there are some things that you really cannot do. Where this would change my life is to give me the independence and the flexibility to go the places I both want to go and need to go when I need to do those things. You guys get out, I've got places I have to go. It's been nice, you know, it's been nice.
Fascinating enough with that understanding of that's where robotics are moving into. It's assisting us to do things we never thought possible. And it's not just cars, it's even in our homes, it's in factories. And again, no city has really said, we want to be the place where kids coming out of college come low cost of living, decent airport, the ability that's beautiful here. There's actually a great pool of resources and mentors in this city for robotics, surprisingly enough. I don't know if that's a known fact. But I believe, playing into the local opportunity, I believe that this city, Coeur d'Alene, has a unique opportunity and a unique place and time right now, when this revolution is beginning. We have high school classes placing nationally in robotics. I found out there are 70-plus tech companies in North Idaho. There's even one of 50-plus employees in Post Falls that works on motion control for robotics. All these things I didn't know that are starting to pop up. One gentleman who invented the robotic arm on the front of submarines lives here. Crazy things that are here in our town. From our side, just to share with you what I've worked on, we're working on a venture capital fund that will be recruiting from these colleges, hopefully, and going out there and getting them to come here and see Coeur d'Alene as a viable option for building robotics. We're working on a building right now. I have meetings at least two, three times a week to drive a arts and innovation factory that will house robotic tech startups in the city. We are doing a think tank this summer, like I shared. We've got a professor from Tokyo City that's coming here for a sabbatical, and he's willing to put together a robotics program that focuses on, he's taught for 35 years, he's developed braces that keep the elderly from slipping and falling in the snow. It's all artificial intelligence. And he's willing to come here, surprisingly, and guess how he found out? He opened up the paper on the front page, said, "Robots, welcome," talking about our efforts in Coeur d'Alene. His son lives in Post Falls and does finance out of his house, because his son moved here because some friend said, "It's pretty, you should come here." So that's why he came here. He has no other reason except for it's pretty and has friends. And we're hosting multiple tech events throughout each month. It's fireside chats, we're getting ready to launch early-stage business, early-morning coffees where people can pose their problems in early-stage business, pub nights, pitch nights for people to pitch their startup ideas. So all of this is coming into play right now in this city, myself, and a contingent of people who have just saw this as an opportunity in the world. And my proposal comes back to the idea that I believe there is an opportunity for Coeur d'Alene to be on the map, to be the first city in the world, to have some laws that address, how do robots interact with human beings? It doesn't have to be a heavy lifting exercise. I think it should be very light. I propose there's four simple laws we could address that have been in science fiction for a long time, called Asimov's Four Laws. It just addresses that we can't hurt the robots, they can't hurt us. It's pretty simple. And actually, if you think about it, it does address a lot of different things that people may have concerns about. The licensure of them, we can mess around with the weight limit on that if we'd like to, but I do think it's an interesting idea. If people do want to have autonomous robots operating on public property, independent of a human operator, this doesn't address robots in factories, but one that's on public property. I think it should be licensed and it's an income source for the city, it's revenue. But also, it helps us address this. And I think it's a fool's errand to think that the rest of the world is not addressing this at some point. Right now, Google has an ethics board they've put together to simply address these things. The rest of the world is starting to think through, what does this mean for us? I'm bringing this forward as an opportunity and also to put us on the front edge of it and to be the first city in the world. I spent an hour on the phone with Fast Company, which is just Magazine of the Year, their senior writer, going, what's going on in Coeur d'Alene? Because I talked about it in New York with him recently. And so he's intrigued. They're planning on sending somebody out to the think tank. I don't want to change the ecosystem of Coeur d'Alene, but I do want to see great jobs, great opportunity, in us tackling part of the software revolution. I'm tired of my friends leaving and going, taking jobs in Santa Barbara, doing politics or running a hedge fund in LA, or myself, who've moved all around the US doing different startup companies. So that's what I have to say, and I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Nick. And I've gotten to know Nick over the last three or four months, have had several conversations with him, have got to meet some of his friends, Cody Peterson and Ryan Arnold. The only thing that is bad about this is you're never the smartest one when you're with these guys. These guys are so smart and so sharp, and we are lucky to have young people. Nick and his friends are the leaders, future leaders of Coeur d'Alene. And what they're bringing to the table is exactly what we've been asking for. We've been asking for someone to bring forward something like this that is going to be innovative, that's going to be new, that's going to be exciting, that's going to keep our young people who go and get a good education to live here in Coeur d'Alene. So it's very exciting, and I think we should do whatever we can to support you.
About the smartest, by the way, I just work really hard.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As some of you may or may not know, I do dabble in robotics. This is the first robot I've made. This is Potobot, and he does very interesting things. I won't turn it, well, I'll turn him on. He runs, so yay.
That's great.
Does he have a license?
And that's the question, so is he now illegal? And the other two robots, which are now doing illegal things. No, actually, I'm into robots, I think they're really fun, and if I had more time, I'd be doing them all the time, but it's just, it's very time-consuming and it's fun, though. I was the mentor for the Lake City Robotics Team, the first robotics team, and then I ran out of time for that, too, so. But I have a question for you.
Yes.
So you want to attract businesses here that deal in robotics.
Correct.
How are we going to attract them when we say that we regulate them and that you have to have licenses and pay fines and all that? I mean, that Google car is pretty impressive, but you'd have to license that if you had that in the city, correct?
Correct, correct.
Tell me how that works.
Yeah, the licensure, I don't see it as an obstacle. These laws around the proposals of the basics of Asimov's laws or whatever we look at are simply to put a stake in the ground as a city and say, we care enough about our citizens and the future of this robotics revolution, that there is going to be some crossover, and we're at least addressing it loosely. I think as Google and DARPA and other groups continue to define what laws should look like, we may want to look towards them as leaders, but I think we should be the first to definitely have the stake in the ground. Being a deterrent, I do not see it as that. I see it as actually an attractant. When, if I'm in college at MIT, and there's a beautiful city on a lake where I can rent an apartment for $900, and go with a couple of my buddies and start my company where there's a VC fund, and they've got these laws about robots, to me, it's interesting, being the first. And I don't envision it being thousands of dollars to license these robots. I don't know what the licensure should look like or the amount. And that's where I would need some help from the city to look at this and understand, what does that mean? I don't, even in talking to Google, the gentleman oversees their car program, he said, hey, would you guys tackle getting the drive in the snow? Because they can't have them drive in the snow yet. And I just thought, that's interesting. I'm not ready for that, but they care enough about here. I don't see a few hundred dollars a year being something that's going to deter someone trying to get Google's cars to drive in the snow to stop. We're not talking soup kitchens or restaurants, we're talking moonshots, where people are planning on raising millions of dollars and hoping to create something that revolutionizes the world. And that's what I want to stay here. That's what I want to attract here. And if a few hundred dollars for a license scares them away, I'm okay with them never coming. And I would rather have a culture that embraces robotics and that we're working closely with MIT and Carnegie Mellon and DARPA and creating a pipeline to the city. And again, I don't see them as deterrents, I see them as attractants at this point, early on in the stage.
I would argue that one of the, and I like what you're doing, but the fees are a sticking point for me, because one of the things that made Silicon Valley so successful was that you basically could do it in a garage and you didn't need a license or a fee. And you know that's still true today, that if I wanted to develop software, that, you know, I can, I'll pay my home occupancy permit, thank you, Renata. But I will, you know, I can do all that, and I don't have to pay a license to run the software. It's basically, I just throw it up there and people buy it, I'm rich, so.
Correct. And I'm, I'll say this, I've asked people who have built robots and who are in this space, they love the idea of having the first robot license. No one has felt as if it's a scary thing or something they don't want to do. I actually have people who are trying to line up to get the first ones, and they want to be the first in the world with a license for a robot, and they think it's nifty. It's kind of a badge of honor, I built one and I get the first one.
Okay.
If we find it as a deterrent, or if the city sees it as not a reason or something that, as an obstacle, I'm not married to any of these laws. I'm not married to any of this. What I'm married to is doing whatever I can to get the rest of the world to see Coeur d'Alene as the hub for, if I want to start a company in robotics, why not there? And to consider our city, and I think this is a piece that shows not only my private side efforts, what's going on in the city, but it's also a public way that CNN and Fast Company can care about, and it carries more weight this way.
Any other questions for Nick?
I have a couple. Nick, I was, when I was first reading this, I was tripping out. I was picturing you going down the beach with this robot next to you. And, because you talked about public spaces and being able to interact and not hurt anybody, and it got me real confused. And then when you said toaster, oh, toaster. Let me relate from the toaster point of view. And then seeing this little thing, this little robot, it's real hard for us non-robot guys to relate to robots. But I hear what you're saying, and like these other guys, I'm excited about the potential of somebody coming here and doing that, or they're already here, it's already happening. It seems like a strange, strange pitch to say, you know, we want license and regulations when we don't have anything physical we can see. You know, this little guy shouldn't need a license, right?
Correct. It's too small, especially under that representation. Unless Councilman Gookin wanted it to operate on public property, separate of him, separate of him as an operator, then that would be the space where I think there should be some sort of guidelines around, what does that look like?
You know, I like the idea a lot, it seems real weird, but it's worth, to me, it's probably worth some effort on our, the smart guys back there to be able to at least see if they can fulfill what you picture it, the need to be to make it happen.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
So that, you know, we get that support. We've all, I mean, you grew up here and left, and now at least you're coming back, and that's a big deal. You know, my kids, most of us guys, I have older kids, have gone, and a lot of them haven't come back. And not that robots is everything, but I get it. It's all that other stuff that goes along with it.
Yep, exactly. It's the service providers, the lawyers, the accountants that we need back here.
Right.
And even future politicians. And to address the weirdness of it, it's funny, I was at that dinner in LA last week, and a gentleman who is building these robotic homes and the cerebral hut, we were sitting at dinner, and he said, I envision a day where, when you start the dishwasher, it starts when it wants. And immediately, I felt offended. And he's like, well, what if it knows better than you? What if it knows when you unload it all the time? What if it knows it's just going to sit there? What if it knows when the city is flowing at different times, and the water is going to be better to use the water at this time, so it doesn't put strain on the system? And all of a sudden, I started thinking about it differently. I said, what if your table could know how many people are having for dinner, and just pulls out leaves for you? And I just thought, do I need to thank my table? Like, what is happening here? But the funny thing is, these are real things, real people are creating and addressing in our world is moving towards, it's not moving away. And the sci-fi side of it, it used to be folklore. But I sat in a session with the head of the robotic car for Ford, them driving in Pelotons now, Stanford, Google, the government arm of it, and I sat there and said, six years, it'll be here.
I think we all thought, my brother, we always talk about the Jetsons, how come we haven't got the flying car yet? And all those things. That's the robot we grew up with, and that's not the robot you're necessarily talking about.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, but maybe someday there.
Nick, you are familiar with Kurzweil's Singularity?
Yes.
Okay.
The gentleman who oversees networking and computing at Singularity will be here this summer.
Okay.
Which is exciting. I'm hoping to get Kurzweil here at some point. He's crazy, and I love it.
Any other questions for Nikiki?
First of all, this is very inspiring, and you have to move the Tuesday night meeting to another night so that I can attend.
We are.
Thank you. But I also like that I heard the word nifty and tripping out in the same paragraph, so that brings it all together. I really think these kinds of jobs and these kinds of creative thinkers are a positive move, and visionary folks who can take a look at something like this, get their head around it, and I'd like to be able to support that any way I can. What I'd ask of you is, if we're asked to proceed with researching and drafting an ordinance that there is on your side, a commitment from yourself and/or a committee that can give ongoing support to what these governance issues are, and that those folks continue somehow to be bound to move this forward as, except for Dan, I don't have a robot other than toaster, and I'd really, I'd like to be able to help on this, but if folks like you can commit to doing that, it makes good sense to take a look at an ordinance that this is this creative and innovative.
Thank you, yeah, I can commit to that, and I'll use my resources as well, even with professors that I know that are in robotics and other people that are creating and manufacturing things that are already in the marketplace.
Thank you. And thank you for being here.
Any other questions for Nick? Thank you.
Thank you.
So just a question for Mike. What we are looking at is, we are going to direct staff to look at the proposed robot regulations?
Yeah, so it'll involve a trip to another universe for me.
Trip back?
No, it would be like anything, you have certain resources, and whether you want to direct us to work on things or not. And so we're coming here, bringing Nick's idea, and we would work with Nick and come back with some idea of, for regulations. I think he's not looking at a big onerous thing, but just something that, like you said, put the stake in the ground. And so we would come back through our committees and say, here's what's proposed, you could work on that. Ultimately, if the committee sends it forward, then it would come to you guys like any other ordinance.
So we are looking at council, at directing staff to look into these proposed regulations?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion, then, Mr. Mayor, to move to direct staff to proceed with
And so we would come back through our committees, and say, here's what's proposed, you could work on that. Ultimately, if the committee sends it forward, then it would come to you guys, like any other ordinance.
So we are looking at council, at directing staff to, to look into these proposed regulations?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion, then, Mr. Mayor, to move to direct staff to proceed with a development of regulations regarding robots.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
It always stops me to robots.
Wait, I wanted to go, I just wanted to say, so this is, is this a novelty, or would this be considered a novelty, or is this like, just going to have the same weight as every other rule in our city?
Yeah, it would be an ordinance that would be adopted and enforced as applicable. Obviously, depending on what the ordinance said and the requirements were, if it was a licensing for a certain sized robot, if you had your big robot out and it didn't have a license, you might be subject to a fine.
And that's kind of my concern, well, Woody enjoyed the moment.
I'm sorry.
Dan, I think you need to be on the committee.
I know, I brought it. But I just, I don't want to see it be a deterrent, and that's kind of the hesitation here, is I don't want someone to say, well, you know, we're going to go move our robotics business to Post Falls, for example, nothing wrong with Post Falls, because it's, it's close to Coeur d'Alene, but we don't have to pay the $100 licensing fee. So, I mean, could we craft it without a fine or something like that?
Sure, and we can bring options through the committee. I mean, it could be a $5 license, or a whatever. I think the point, I hadn't really thought about it, but Nick brought up that, wow, I got license number one for the first robot license, maybe that's, that would be a big deal for
I think for all the binary licenses, we should charge more.
I see.
That was a nerd joke. Steve, go ahead.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second discussion. Steve?
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Ron and I, first of all, Ron and I had moved to table this, this item at General Services when it came up a while back. I'd spoke to Nick before the meeting, and, I'm sorry, Nick, my opinion hasn't changed. As I, as I told you, Lorna Finnman came to a meeting about four years ago that I'd gone to, and, and had introduced, you know, what they were doing with the robotics, and I was very excited, and I think it's an industry that's going to have a huge impact here, whether, whether or not the city supports it or not. To me, it just, it blurs the line between proper role of government and, and the free market. And so, again, I'm still of that opinion. To me, it's, it's, as Dan said, a novelty. To me, it's, it's a gimmick. I told Nick I would support a proclamation that Coeur d'Alene was a robot city, anything we could do, you know, along those lines to, to promote it, but I just think having an ordinance regulation, a law, it's restrictive, as Dan pointed out. There's, there's fees or fines, and, and I'm not a big, big proponent of that, so I won't be voting in favor of this.
Any other discussion? No other discussion? So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Next one?
Let's see, Council Bill 141003, Amendments to the Municipal Code Regarding Children's License, we go from Robert, robot licensing, to children licensing.
Childcare, Woody.
Requirements. Oh, childcare, big difference.
Yeah, not licensing children.
We're not licensing kids, honest with you guys. This is general services, this is all confusing to me, this is all new. License requirements for playgrounds and requirements, and municipal code regarding childcare facility violations, and here's the girls, hi, girls.
Hi.
Ladies.
This recommendation is being brought forth from our childcare commission. I've got three members here with me tonight, I've got Barbie Harrison, Arva Ziegler, who's the chairman, and Kim Targerson. And this is brought forward due to some concerns that they have regarding some of the playgrounds in our childcare areas that don't have any shade, and also that don't have any source of water. And so we're asking for regulation to have some type of, shade can be a temporary type something, that's not real expensive to do, some form of water, which could be some, a water jug with paper cups or whatever, but just that all of our childcare providers have shade and water on their playgrounds, to prevent childcare from having heat stroke in the summer, and during your hot season. And we've noticed a lot of the new playgrounds don't have any trees yet, or any shade, and a lot of them don't have any water, and it's a rising incident of children with heat stroke. So with that, would you like to hear from any of the commissioners, or we'd just like to have this ordinance included in our childcare licensing packet?
Maybe, we will see if anyone has any questions for any of the ladies here. Steve?
I don't have any questions. Thank you for your work on the committee, ladies. I'd vote, I was the bad guy again, I voted against this at, at General Services, and Kathy came up to me after the meeting, says, why are you against little kids? I said, I'm not against little kids, I've got little kids. And I said, I'm just against, you know, adding, you know, more burdens to small businesses. And she'd explained that, I said, you know, why can't the kids just go back inside if they get hot? But apparently, they're not staffed well enough, so if it's playtime outside, they have to stay outside, and then they have to go back in. And, you know, so a water bucket and, and umbrella.
Yeah, a lot of our childcare now, the playground facilities are using pea gravel and things for the fall zones, and a lot of those absorb the heat too, which make it extra hot. And a lot of times, people aren't aware that the children have prone to heat stroke. A lot of times, they'll be rested and flushed, but not sweating, and that's one of the signs of heat stroke, and needs immediate attention, you know, if that happens, so.
Yeah, so with that explanation, I'm okay with it. And so, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to accept Council Bill Number 14-1003.
Got a motion, we have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Can I make one note, too? The second part of that ordinance is just a housekeeping issue. We have the Panhandle Health do our health inspections at our childcare facilities, and one of the things we recognize this year, we had a childcare facility that had a lot of problems, and they had health problems as well as code problems with the city. They did clean up the health problems, so we weren't able to, our, we weren't able to, we did not proceed with health issues on the, working with a license with a particular facility. However, it came through our attention at that point, that all the health regulations are in the health codes with the state. Our city code didn't give us the right, if there were extreme health issues, to close down a facility on that basis. So this is just to add that, on the basis of the health department's violations, that we're able to close, and our city ordinance be able to close the daycare down, or put them on violation. Thank you.
Any other discussion from the council? Okay. Ask the clerk to read the title.
Thank you. This is Council Bill Number 14-1003, An Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Many municipal codes, Section 5.68030 and 5.68140, to require shade and water be provided in outdoor play areas of childcare facilities, and providing that three or more violations of health and safety regulations may result in denial or revocation of a childcare license. Providing repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing severability, providing the publication of a summary, and providing an effective date.
Okay. Roll call.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
Motion second, any discussion? Roll call.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Motion carried. We will now move on to Public Works.
Mayor, I would like to move to, let's see, this is a good one. Dan, do this, would you, this is a parking thing. It's a housekeeping, correct?
Yeah, it's housekeeping. Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, we were approached by the legal department at Public Works, because general services didn't meet, and normally this would be a general services item, but apparently, our, our parking ordinance deals with how far away you park from the street, from the edge of the street, it's a certain amount of distance, but we have one-way streets in town. And so our ordinance was written that it only applied to the right side of the street. This fixes it, so it basically says either side of the street that you have to park within a certain distance, otherwise you get a ticket. I hope I have that right, chief. It's, he's nodding yes. So, anyway, that's the way I understood it, you have to be within 18 inches from the curb, and this is, as Woody said, this is a housekeeping item, so that it refers to either side of the street.
Good job. So we have a motion?
Oh, second?
We don't have, we didn't have a motion.
No, I was asking for a motion.
But I would make a motion to, to go ahead and approve Council Bill 14106, Amending the Municipal Code at 10.20.060A, Regarding the Parking Requirements.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Renata, if you could read the title.
This is Council Bill Number 14-1006, An Ordinance Amending the Municipal Code of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Amending Section 10.20.060, to clarify, the parking must be in the direction of travel on one-way streets, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, provide for the publication of a summary of this ordinance, and an effective date hereof.
Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Any discussion? Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Motion carried.
We will now move on to other business, which is Resolution Number 14-016, Approving Amendments to Personnel, Rule 1, and we have a staff report by Melissa Tosi. Melissa, thank you.
Good evening. Most of the amendments that were listed in the staff report and the postings are just general housekeeping changes to the personal rules. There are a couple amendments to the classification and compensation plan, which are the reclassification of the librarian, librarian position, and the title change of the public information coordinator position to communications coordinator. There's no actual costs associated with any of the housekeeping changes. There is an increase due to the reclassification of the library position based on the added duties to the position, based on the reorganization that the library has done. The library will absorb those costs, due to the savings of not refilling the deputy library director position that was vacated back in March. They will be filling that as a librarian position, so there'll be some additional savings for that reclassification, as well as extending some of the hours on the weekend to keep the library open a little longer. So the amendments were all posted for 10 days before the meeting. There were no concerns or questions by either of the associations or the union.
Do you need the council to have questions for Melissa?
I just wanted to thank Melissa for, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to thank Melissa for keeping up on this stuff. I know it's a lot of work, and, and I appreciate that you, you bring this to us.
Sure, you're welcome.
Steve?
Mr. Mayor, you're, you're wanting to bring forth a wage study, and so I was just wondering if it was your opinion that moving the pay grade up would be in conflict with doing that, putting the horse, or the cart before the horse on, on that one?
No, this is something that we've been working on, so we could expand library hours. And what Melissa did was with working with Betty from the library to take a look at with these new responsibilities, we basically are going to go down from an assistant library director to three librarians, and Melissa had sent this to BDPA to be basically rescheduled, and this is what came back. And so I'm supportive of this. What this does is, this is a budget-neutral item, and what it also allows us, in that budget, it allows us to open the library more hours. So I think it's really a win situation.
Okay.
The reclassification of the librarian is from a pay grade in 11 to a 12, and that position that Betty is no longer going to fill was a pay grade 15, so that's kind of where the savings is coming in.
Okay. Any other questions for Melissa?
Mr. Mayor, I would move for resolution, approval of Resolution 14-016.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Further discussion? No further discussion seen. Roll call.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Okay. Motion carried. Now we have Council Bill Number 141007. This is just pursuant to council action that we've taken on February 18th.
Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of Council Bill 14-1007, Waterford Edition, 10th Edition, Zone Change from R3 to C17L to R8, pursuant to action in February of 2014.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Renata, if you could read the title, please.
This is Council Bill 1007, An Ordinance Amending the Zoning Act of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho, known as Ordinance Number 1691. Ordinance of, of the City of Coeur d'Alene by changing the following described property from R3 and C17L to R8. Said property being described as follows: to wit, plus or minus 12.66 acres, at the landings at Waterford 10th Edition. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, provide for the publication of a summary of this ordinance, and an effective date hereof.
Okay, roll call.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Move to suspend rules?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules and a second. Any discussion on that? Seeing no discussion, roll call.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of Council Bill 14-1008, Utility Easement Nider Conference Center. This was pursuant to council action April of 2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Renata, read the title, please.
Certainly. Council Bill 14108, An Ordinance of the City of Coeur d'Alene Vacating a Sewer and Water Easement in the Nider Conference Center Addition Subdivision. Recorded in Book G of Platts, Pages 355/A, Records of Cootney County Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Generally described as the 24-foot sewer and waterline easement, joining the southern boundary line of Lot 2. Repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, and providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance, and an effective date hereof.
Roll call.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Do you have a motion to suspend the rules?
Oh, I'll move to suspend the rules and adopt Council Bill 14-1008 by having its title read only once.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? No discussion. Roll call.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for the approval of findings and orders for SP-6-13, the Fort Ground homeowners' request for an R8 single-family designation pursuant to Council action on April 1, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that item? No discussion seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Next.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I would move for approval of A1-14, Annexation From County, 155 Hanley, Lake Forest, let's see, it's a city, to the city, R8 and C17 pursuant to action on March 18, 2014.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? No discussion seen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Let's see, one more, I think. Council Bill 14-1009, Annexation and Zoning Designations Ordinance. Move for approval of.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion. Renat, read the title, please.
Council Bill Number 14-1009, An Ordinance Annexing and Declaring to be a Part of the City of Coeur d'Alene, Cootney County, Idaho. Specifically described portions of Section 26, Township 51 North, Range 4 West, Boise Meridian. Zoning such specifically described property hereby annexed, repealing all ordinances and parts of ordinances in conflict herewith, providing a severability clause, providing for the publication of a summary of this ordinance and an effective date hereof.
Roll call.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Move to suspend the rules?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Is there any discussion? Roll call.
Adams.
Yes.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Oh, man, it's still going.
One more, one more, Wood. You got it, didn't you?
Move for approval of Resolution Number 14-017, Annexation Agreement with Lake Forest LLC.
Second.
We have a motion and we have a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion seen. Roll call.
Miller.
Yes.
Evans.
Yes.
McEvers.
Yes.
Gookin.
Yes.
Adams.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, now will we move on to a legislative public hearing on 0-3-13? This is a proposed subdivision ordinance revision. And I do have a sign-up sheet here with one person that wishes to testify when that appropriate time comes. We will now have a staff report by Warren Wilson.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, we are back in front of you with the revised subdivision ordinance. You'll recall back in January, I think it was on the 23rd, we had a workshop where we spent a couple hours working through the minutia of the changes that we're making to the code. Since that time, or between that time and now, staff has spent a fair bit of time taking that fairly rough product, recasting it, putting it in a new order, essentially clarifying language, modernizing language, to bring back to you our new subdivision code. I will recap for you briefly the major changes that are in the draft compared to our existing subdivision ordinance. The first is we've revised our street and right-of-way widths, so those are, in most cases, somewhat narrower than you have seen in the past. It allows us to essentially, hopefully, do more with less. And you have reduced maintenance costs. It's also consistent with what communities across the county and what the county and the highway districts are looking for. We also have revisions to our landscaping buffer requirements, and those typically come into play where we have double-fronted lots, where you have a lot that has a frontage on an interior street backing up to a major street. For instance, if you think along Ramsey Road, at Coeur d'Alene Place, where you see those green landscape buffers along Ramsey Road. This code is aimed at replicating that in other locations. We have some additional regulation that calls out more specifically what the landscaping should look like, how it's going to be maintained. We've also created some exceptions and some workarounds for smaller pieces of property where large buffer yards really don't make sense and don't work out well for them. We have a new process to address boundary line adjustments. In our current code, we talk about boundary line adjustments, but there's really no process that's discussed in how to process those and move them through for approval. So we have a new process for that. We have also adopted a new short plat process. Traditionally, short plats have gone to our planning commission where it's an administrative item. The delay that's created is when it's on a hearing item, you have to submit it to staff X weeks in advance so that we can do our staff report, then schedule it for the hearing. That creates a little bit of delay for developers. So by having the, the new proposal is that staff would work through that and approve it as a hearing officer. Essentially, the city engineer would sit as a hearing officer and approve that, which will save the developer potentially a couple of weeks, maybe more, depending on the project, and allow the approval to go through quicker. The other side of this, and I think it works out better for everyone, is that we're now going to be providing public notice to surrounding property owners that there's been a short plat applied for, which isn't done now. So the neighbors are actually going to get a level of notice that they're not currently getting. So I think this will hopefully be a better product all the way around. The last couple of items are new, actually, since we had our discussion in January. We've revised the findings to approve subdivisions. Those revisions are largely to bring us into compliance or be consistent with a change in Idaho code that was adopted two sessions ago and some guidance from the Idaho Supreme Court that we shouldn't be judging subdivisions against our comprehensive plan. So we've taken out a finding that says, is it consistent with the comprehensive plan? As the Supreme Court tells us, we shouldn't be doing that. And we've also taken out the finding regarding, is it in the public interest? That's done because the legislature, two sessions ago, changed it so that all of our findings should be explicit, so when people come in for an approval, they know exactly what they're being judged against. Something as amorphous as, is the public interest served? It's really hard to say, well, this is what that standard means. And so we've taken that out. We've beefed up findings regarding, do you have sufficient infrastructure to service the development? Is it consistent with our zoning? Do the lots comply? So it's really focused in on the explicit requirements for creating a subdivision. And then finally, our current language doesn't clearly address how an appeal of a subdivision is taken to city council. So we've borrowed the process that exists for our other land use decisions and incorporated that into the subdivision ordinance, so it's explicit what has always been implicit. Those are the gist of the big changes. At this point, I think I'll take your questions. I think you've worked through it, hopefully. You've seen these in the workshop. I do have the PowerPoint that we put on the night of the workshop. We can go back through that again if that's your pleasure. Gordon is here, he can answer some questions as well.
Counsel, any questions for either Warren or Gordon's available too for questions? Dan?
I don't really, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't really have a question on the changes. Most of the changes seem like they make sense. I still have an issue. I don't think this was changed regarding the fact that if the preliminary plat is approved, you give them 12 months from the approval date to do the recording, that you can kick it down the road five times. And so that wasn't changed at all in this.
No, that's, that process we adopted, frankly, during the downturn. It used to be that you couldn't do that quite as often. What we saw happen is you would have a development that would get approved and you'd get halfway developed. And then there was no need for additional lots. And so you would have the potential for these approvals to lapse, the developer to go away, and you're essentially left with a half-developed subdivision with half the infrastructure done. We needed to find a tool that allowed us to keep that approval in place and hopefully keep the developer involved so that we could move this down the road. The process does involve the ability of the city to essentially say to the developer, there's new conditions that need to be applied because the code has changed or the rules have changed, so that we can address, making sure that this is kept current. It also is a one-off, so each year you have to come in. You don't come in once and get a five-year approval, which you come in each year and get an approval to extend it one more time potentially. You can do that up to five times. So it's, you're essentially buying one year's grace period before your approval lapses.
And I understand that, and I wouldn't sink the entire update just because of that. It's just something that I would be sensitive to, that it could be open to abuse.
Yeah, it could, and it's something we'll monitor. It's something that we, like, so we found a need for that tool during the downturn as we're moving into a busier cycle. I don't think we're going to see it, frankly, for hopefully a few years to come. It's something to certainly monitor.
Very good.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Warren. We are going into the public comment portion of this. Each person that wishes to speak will have up to five minutes to address the council. We have one person that has signed up to speak. We have David Callahan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and good evening, everyone. I'm David Callahan, Community Development Director for Cootney County, and I'm here in support of your regulations. Our interest is particular to us and small in nature, but very important to us. We have an intergovernmental agreement, an ACI with you, an area of city impact that requires my staff to refer to your staff, any subdivisions in the unincorporated county but within your area of city impact. And through that review process, we're obligated to defer to your staff, who must review our subdivision against your municipal regulations. And in particular, your current regulations don't address streets as narrow as we would normally have them in the county. And so that's why I'm very pleased to see in your new regulations, a 24-foot minimum standard that would be very helpful to your staff and mine.